Okay, good evening. Welcome to the special meeting study session regarding the water system. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hollibur.
President.
Vice Mayor Pappen.
President.
Councilmember Schneider.
President.
And Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Oliva, absent.
Okay.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Mics are on, right?
Mics are on.
Hello? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, ma'am. Here comes Councilwoman Oliva.
Councilwoman Oliva is arriving. Public Communications, should we save that for the regular meeting at 7:00 PM and just move on with this presentation?
That's acceptable.
Unless it's about this item.
Okay. All right, so new business, we have an update on the water infrastructure needs. Can we have a report, please?
We're going to start this evening. Jim Steele, representing Finance, talk about what occurred at the last meeting. Some questions were raised. Provide the information as we understand it. We're also going to follow with Cyrus Kianpour, providing information, and then return to the council and take questions. So Jim, if you would start, please.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, this is the second of two study sessions that city staff has put together on the status of the City of Millbrae's water infrastructure. Our first session was on January 24th, and how tonight is going to unfold as far as the presentation is, we're going to do a very brief recap of what we discussed on the 24th in case there are members of the public who weren't here for that, and then we're going to go into questions from, that we got at the last session. And the city manager mentioned, my name is Jim Steele. I was the interim Finance Director prior to city getting our new Finance Director, and before that I was with the City of South San Francisco as Finance Director for 16 years. And now I'm going to turn it over to Cyrus Kianpour, who is a former Public Works Director for the City of Millbrae and a CIP technical expert and CIP manager, who's been helping us look at the status of our water infrastructure.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the audience, members of the public. Essentially, in the last meeting, we presented an inventory of what the system, the water system, currently supports. There are 23,000 customers for the water system, 6,500 connections, essentially equating to about four persons per connection. The water completely comes from SFPUC system, the HHE system, that has gone through significant upgrade and reconstruction in recent years. Essentially, the entire supply comes from the pipelines at the bottom of the hill along El Camino Real and also from Harry Tracy Water Treatment Plant. The city has 75 miles of water mains. Typically, the age of those are around 60 to 70 years. Useful life is estimated at about 50 years. The water system also supports 500 hydrants as well as 1,500 shower valves, which are essentially gate valves that control the system and give the maintenance crew the ability to isolate or shut down the system as they need to. The system, the storage in the system consists of four active water tanks. We have three along Skyline Boulevard, two on Skyline, and one on La Prenda. There's also one in the proximity of Skyline Boulevard, which is Vallejo Tank. There's also Helen Tank that sits vacant and essentially is not in use at this point. There are also two pump stations that move the water from zones to different zones. One is Madera, that was rehabilitated in 2008, as well as Larkspur, that will need some improvements, and is currently in this city's capital improvement program for further improvements. One of the biggest challenges that the city has had is the impact of aging water pipes and the need to repair and emergency repair them as they break and they go beyond their useful life. I think the event that I remember was the December 13, 2013, we had seven water main breaks in one day, which was a very difficult day, and the city's crew did heroic job of dealing with it. And essentially, that was an indication of how the system is getting to a point that there's going to be more and more of that kind of event taking place. Essentially, what is being proposed, or what are the basic proposals that we have? In the last meeting, it was talked about a 50-year lifecycle replacement, which essentially equated to about 2% replacement per year. So one of the things that is being discussed is the need perhaps to accelerate the infrastructure investment to at least minimum of 2% per year to meet that 50-year lifecycle. It is preferred that maybe in the initial part of the program, we accelerate the replacement in order to catch up with what needed to be done and is in the backlog. Nevertheless, that's something that, you know, we would seek guidance and direction from the council as far as how to move forward. Some of the questions from the first session, the first one was, can you provide a, if I can load this thing, can you provide a map that includes the case, basically particular areas of the need? And there are two copies of the maps in the room at this point. In this map, what we are showing in red are what is being, from the perspective of pump stations and water tanks, what's currently?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Cyrus. There are handouts at the back table, if any of the members of the public would like those, and I think feel free to walk up, if it helps, to walk up to the poster board, that's what it's there for, to look closer at the map that Cyrus is discussing.
This has a laser, right? Essentially, there's a laser.
Perfect.
What we have on the top are the three water tanks that are currently planned in the CIP for replacement, as well as Larkspur Pump Station that is shown in red as what is in the next five-year plan. Then we have basically provided a five-year cycle at the bottom of the page, showing what we estimate as the time for replacement of the water pipes in what zone. So that map is available, and if anybody's interested to get more details, we can certainly provide that. There's also a master plan that was completed in 2015 that is also available for whoever might be interested as far as the options that were discovered, or discussed, or evaluated for basically what the water system should look like as this program unfolds. The next question was, can you give a rough idea of how much the water system has been upgraded? And as we said, the water system has 75 miles of water pipe. We estimate that 25 to 30% of the system has been replaced since 1995. Currently, there's a project that is replacing two miles of water pipes, which is about 80% complete this year. So as you see, you know, there's plenty of work left to be done as far as the water distribution system is concerned, but there's been some work that has taken place as the budget has allowed and for the CIP portion of the water fund. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Jim.
Thank you, Cyrus. One of the questions that a member of the public asked at the last session was, wouldn't it help to have a separate water department from the Public Works Department? The water utility is served by seven exclusively dedicated maintenance crew members that are dedicated to the water infrastructure itself. So there's, that's a plus, as well as the efficiencies from sharing administrative and engineering services with the overall Public Works Department. The other advantage, the way the city is structured, is that in an emergency, like when we had recent rain events, staff from all the maintenance crews can be diverted to taking care of those emergency situations. But on a day-to-day basis, there are seven dedicated water utility staff. Another question we got was, how is the city's water utility paid for? And the water system is paid exclusively through user charges to members of the public, residents and businesses on their water bills, on their utility bills. The money that comes in for the water charges are used exclusively for the water utility. There's no commingling of city funds. We keep real close accounting of those dollars, and they're only used for water purposes. Another question we got was, how is the water utility different then from the police department or a fire department, recreation services, or street maintenance services? Those services are all general fund, general funded services that are, where revenues come from general city taxes and fees, such as hotel taxes, property taxes, sales taxes. And that's very different from the water utility, which I just mentioned is funded exclusively through charges to residents and businesses. Is this arrangement common for city governments? And yes, it is. It's very, very common. On the peninsula, there's a couple of communities that are served by a special district. I'm aware of the City of South San Francisco, where I work, that's primarily served by two private water companies, two for-profit water companies. And in all cases, the users of those services, regardless of how the water is provided, the users are charged for their fair share of the costs. Another question that came up at the last session was, if water rates are based on my actual usage, why have my charges not gone down while I've been cutting back my water usage dramatically during the drought? Water rates have not been raised since 2013. Customers are billed on their utility bill for both water and sewer charges. That's all in one bill. The costs are broken out separately, but it's all in one bill. Sewer rates have gone up and will continue to go up through 2018, 19, to fund primarily some environmental cleanup requirements that the sewer system needs to take care of. Here's an example of a typical water bill. May I step up there?
That'd be great.
You'll lose the microphone. But let me just point out, this is hopefully a typical residential bill.
Jim? Jim, there's a microphone, I believe, at the podium for the, for the viewers on TV, behind the laptop on that table.
I see you. Can you hear me now? So again, utility bills come out every two months, so we do half the city in one month cycle, and the other half in a one-month cycle. You can see, and I'm not good at using the laser, but water usage are the two parts of the bill in yellow. There's a fixed charge, which is $30, that's two months, or $15 a month, and then the actual water usage portion for this single-family home, it was $49 for two months. There has to be a fixed charge, that's common, because even if a resident or a business uses very little water, there's still the whole system that needs to be upgraded. So it's typical for water and sewer rates to be broken into a portion fixed and a portion based on actual usage. The larger part of this, and this is typical for a residential bill, is sewer usage. So there's sewer service, that's the fixed portion, sewer usage, which is based on winter, average winter water usage. So that's measured over three to four months during the winter and averaged. And then what's called SSO, that's the environmental charges that have come on the bill and which will continue to pay for environmental cleanup to make sure that the bay is maintained as well as possible. So you can see in total, and again, this is a typical bill, the water charges for this customer is $79.05 for two months. The sewer portion is 100, almost $193. It's the larger piece of the bill. And I'm going to go back to my seat. So how has the system gotten into disrepair? Why is there a backlog that Cyrus mentioned earlier? As Cyrus mentioned, that the city gets all its water from the SFPUC. That comes primarily from Hetch Hetchy in the Sierras. They have raised their wholesale water charges to all the retail customers like ourselves in most of the cities on the peninsula. They have raised that dramatically, and that's to fix their own infrastructure, which is also aged, and to do some seismic upgrades to the Hetch Hetchy Dam. So as more, more, excuse me, as more and more of the city water utilities revenue that it collects goes to pay for water purchases from the PUC, there's less money left over to pay for everything else. SFPUC has raised their rates to the City of Millbrae 176% to fund that multi-year capital program I mentioned over the last, since 2009. And Millbrae isn't being singled out, we're being charged the same rate as the other communities on the peninsula. So how has that impacted Millbrae's water utility budget? And I believe we showed a version of this at the last session. This is very, this is a very useful graph. In 2009, which was the first, I think it was the last year that the PUC, before they started dramatically raising their rates, if you looked at the revenue that the City of Millbrae brings in, in total, for the water utility, roughly one-third of that went towards purchasing water from the PUC. That's that blue area. Roughly one-third was in the gray, gray area, which are capital improvements. Those are the system replacement and upgrades that are needed to keep the system up to date and in good repair. And roughly one-third, which is the orange, was on operations and maintenance, which is preventative maintenance, repairs, et cetera, but not the replacement of pipes. Last year, which was the last full fiscal year, water purchases is over 50% of the revenue, takes up over 50% of the revenue that the City of Millbrae brings in. So for every dollar that the city is able to collect from the customer, roughly 51 cents just goes to pay for the water itself from the SFPUC, whereas seven years ago, it was more like 31 cents. City still has to provide adequate operations and maintenance, but there's very little money left under the current revenue stream to pay for capital improvements. So you see that the capital piece is very, very small compared to what it was in 2009. This graph shows what's happened, excuse me, over time, with the orange color being the SFPUC rates since 2010, 11, and the gray part being the City of Millbrae's rates to its customers. So the city did have a five-year rate increase that ended in 2013, and has, the rates have been flat for the water utility since then. Meanwhile, you can see that the PUC has continued to raise their rates for their planned capital So if you look where that orange arrow is, that's what the current Millbrae average residential water bill is compared to the other communities on the peninsula, and that was as of, I believe, 2015, 16. So Millbrae has been somewhat slower in raising its rates to keep up with the PUC rate increases. Now, how has that all impacted the financial health of the water utility, which is an enterprise fund? It has to be self-supporting through charges to all the residents and businesses with no funds coming from the city's general fund. So while the PUC has raised rates 176%, which I mentioned, Millbrae's rates, which ended in 2013, the last rate increase, have gone up over that same time period about 29%. So the consequence of that, and you saw earlier how little money is being spent for capital improvements, is the water utility has been using its financial reserves, it's been dipping into reserves to pay for O and M and capital improvements. Last fiscal year, 2015, 16, that just ended last June 30th, in fact, the water utility drew down on its cash by a million, too. Now fortunately, it had put some money aside, but it can't continue to do that indefinitely or it will run out of money. And now I'm going to turn it back to Cyrus.
Thank you, Jim. Another question that was raised was if the city has considered providing recycled water as a way to save water. And the question is, yes, actually, in 2013, the city responded to a request to evaluate recycling, recycled water as means of providing additional water resource. But really, the city's focus has been on conservation. With the drought taking place, the city, as a member of the Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency, has really focused on doing a conservation effort, dealing with our parks and other facilities. Nevertheless, if you look at a separate water, recycled water system, there are clear mandates that that system cannot be combined with a potable water system. So it would require its own water source, which would be our water quality control plant or the treatment plant, which need to be retrofitted and updated to provide that water, as well as a whole new distribution system and connection system to potential users. The key challenge for entities who have looked at recycled water is, is there a user that can use that water throughout the year, where it's continuous, where it's not seasonal, per se? So from the perspective of the recycled water system, absolutely, that's something that, you know, is something that the city has looked at, but the question is the feasibility and the cost involved with setting up such a system. As one of the measures that has been required for the specific plan for the Millbrae station area is the requirement that the developers install purple pipe in anticipation of recycled water coming into that development, and that project will be installing the infrastructure and would be available for future if and when the recycled water comes in. I guess the thing to note is, even if a separate recycled water system is installed, the need for replace and upkeep of the existing system remains, and that's still, you know, something that needs to take place since the water utility infrastructure is aging and it's beyond its lifecycle at this point. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Jim.
So in conclusion, what options does the city have on a go-forward basis to ensure a reliable water system into the future? The city could continue its current practice of underfunding system infrastructure replacement, and we saw that it drew down on reserves by a million, too, last year. So O and M, operations and maintenance, would have to be drastically cut back if this were to take place, which is not really a good option. Regular operations and maintenance, regular preventive maintenance is always an important part of a utility system. It's just like having one's automobile. You don't wait till the red light comes on, hopefully, to take it to the mechanic. Hopefully, you're getting it tuned up, you're having the oil changed, you're having the brake pads checked before there's a problem rather than after. And after there's a problem, it's much more expensive to fix it. Policy decision, the city council could direct staff to seek bids to see if there's a private company like Cal Water that serves South San Francisco willing to purchase this infrastructure system and invest in it. It would still need to invest in improvements and recoup its cost, just like Millbrae needs to. Now, there's some downsides to that. Clearly, the city loses local control, and there's no guarantee that a private operator can have any more competitive rates than what the city can provide. And in fact, a private operator makes a profit and pays income taxes. So there's two big pieces of a private utility that the city doesn't have a cost for. The city pays, does not pay income taxes, the city does not make a profit from the water charges. The council could look at subsidizing the water utility with the general fund dollars. General fund dollars are fixed, that's the property taxes, sales taxes, hotel taxes. Those go to fund primarily the city services that don't have their own revenue source. The water and the sewer utilities have their own revenue source through user charges. Police has some revenue, but it doesn't by any means recover close to what it costs to run the police department, the sheriff's office. Same thing for fire. The fire department is a net in every city, it's a net drain on general fund dollars. There's some other big-ticket items that the community has expressed to the council that they want to make sure that, that services are continued and even increased, such as street repairs and maintenance. And the city also has a park system to maintain, and facilities like the buildings in the city hall complex that need to be upgraded over time as well. So there's some real downsides to subsidizing the water utility from the city's general The last option is the city council could direct staff to look at a multi-year water rate increase, perhaps with different rate options, to fund different levels of infrastructure replacement. I can't think of any other options other than those four, and there might be a mix of any one or two, or three, or four, but those are the basic four options on a go-forward And with that, I'd like to turn it back to the mayor and council members.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Vice Mayor Pappen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff, and it's truly an honor to have those people who are repairing our pipes here in the audience tonight. Thank you, guys. I've seen you work on many urgent fixes, so thank you very, very much for that. I am curious, on this report, it's news to me that the Helen Drive tank has been abandoned and no longer in use. When did that happen and whose decision was that?
I will, I don't know exactly the date, but I think the tank has been out of service for many years, from what I understand. So the tank currently sits empty and just occupies the site. And one option to consider down the road is, if that tank is removed, what's the future use of that property? But the tank has no operational value at this point from the perspective of serving the water system.
No operational value? Okay, well, my concern, gentlemen, is that water storage is a huge issue for the entire state. I mean, granted, we've been real lucky lately, and I know the governor is looking at different aspects of increasing water storage. With that thought process, one would hope the governor might be throwing some money our way. From what I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like it's at all salvageable.
It is not. Actually, if the master plan that was Actually, if the master plant that was prepared for the city completed in 2015 identifies, essentially, storing the water and the majority of storage to go into where currently the skyline tanks are. So one, essentially, the study looked at options, and it seems, from the perspective of putting the storage, that seems to be the most suitable site to maximize the storage for the city's needs. And one of the options they're considering is going with concrete tanks, which are pre-stress concrete tanks, which are a lot less maintenance, no painting, and operationally have a lot easier time from perspective of operation and maintenance, from the perspective of shutting them down or maintaining them. So indeed, this storage has...
Question regarding some concrete tanks would be the earthquake viability of such a tank. I know the SFPUC at the top of the hill here has put in all kinds of new, and what would I hope be state-of-the-art, and I would hope that whatever Milbrae does is also state-of-the-art. So is that what they have done?
That is correct. I mean, essentially nowadays, everybody's, anytime you go over 2 million gallons of water, pre-stress water concrete tanks become extremely economical and effective.
And safe?
And extremely safe. I mean, they've been in use for a lot of years, and at least I know of one that is currently being completed in Hillsborough locally, and I think Burlingame, when they built their tanks, they also went with that type of tank. So that seems to be the state of art. It will not require any painting, you don't have to worry about corrosion in the long run, and from the perspective of performance, they are basically the best there is, again, past the 2 million gallon where they become economical. So there is, I mean, there's...
So what are those tanks in skyline right now? How much are they holding, the two tanks up there?
I think collectively about...
1.5 each?
No.
Combined, combined.
Total. Okay, so... Okay, a million and 500,000. Okay, so we could actually, if we were to improve that, those two tanks, making them one big, 2 million?
No, actually, the water master plant talks about, you know, almost 4 million gallons of storage up there. One of the things they did as a part of the master plant, they modeled the system, and really, the key driver for the size of water tanks is essentially the fire flows. How much water do you store in that tank in order to be able to adequately deal with fires in different basins?
I wish we could say we don't have fires in Milbrae, but obviously, we're wrong.
Anything, and I think, I mean, you have your insurance rating that the community gets from ISO, and so there's, essentially, they looked at the demand. We are fortunate, in a sense, that Harry Tracy has 11 million gallons of storage sitting on site, so there's cross-connections to that system, so there's adequate supply outside of the community. But nevertheless, we need to look at Milbrae on its own.
Yeah, I am looking at Milbrae here. I would, there have been changes to this report since the last time, and I'm hoping they are more enlightening or accurate than the first go-around here. Slide number, could you make them any smaller? It's on page five. Total replacement placed. Okay, the last report we got was, I think, a lot less than that, but are we assured that this 25 to 30% of the system is accurate at this point?
So the number, let me start, and then we'll ask Cyrus.
Because I was looking at my phone at the old version.
Right. So you'll note that in the version that you first saw on the January 24 workshop, it was presented in a different format. It didn't give you the information through 1995, it gave you the information from 2009, I believe it was, or 2006 forward. One of the comments, and working with our own staff getting ready for this, was that we represent a better picture, and so what you have here is inclusive of what you saw before, but it goes back even further. So when, essentially, when we looked at the slide above on page five, the information below seemed to be more reflective and more transparent, not that the item, the information you received before was corrected.
That's right.
Okay. What concerns me, too, is that the last report said we had six staff members, we now have seven?
You'll recall you, in January, approved additional staff. One of them's already onboard, I believe.
Great, that's what we want to hear.
And so, again, our staff suggested that we correct the report between the two meetings and reflect what's actually in the field.
Great, I thank you very much for that.
And if I may, I also need to make one other correction and clarification from what's represented in the last meeting. In the last meeting, it was stated that Burlingame has had over 1,000 water breaks in their system, and that needs to be corrected, that they had, very similar to what Milbrae had, which was around 10 water breaks in that one year, so...
Yeah, they respectfully disagree with what was presented, and we've offered to make a correction.
Okay, Burlingame, we apologize for the misrepresentation.
We have, yes.
A couple of quick last things here. Page 12, has the water, has the city considered water recycling? Along those lines, I would hope that we stay state-of-the-art in that there are more stormwater recovery. I'm not saying this correctly, but I do know the City-County Association of Governments is giving special money for...
You're talking about NPDs?
Stormwater capture, thank you both.
NPDs work, yes.
Yes, and I think that would be a helpful way for us, especially since they're giving funding along those lines, to assist our community, as well as, I don't know if we have in our current codes, but certain pavement is better...
Correct.
Thank you. Permeable, as Councilmember Schneider has pointed out, pavements. If we don't have that in our current codes, I would hope that we do add that.
We do, actually, we are subject to what's called a municipal regional permit, that is basically issued to all the entities that are members of CCG, and there are certain mandates and requirements for all new development, and there are a number of Cs that all the agencies will have to abide by. So yes, I mean, for all new development, they're all required to meet those requirements, from pretreatment to, you will, NPDs requirements from, to deal with stormwater runoff and the quality of the runoff that ends up in the waterways. So we are...
Two little quickie things. As far as the stormwater recovery goes, I would hope that we were, talk to our staff who is in the field each and every day, as for locations that may be desirable or more beneficial to the city, as to where we might put some of these.
We do, and we've sent them to training, and they're very proud of the training, and in fact, every day, they're making improvements and changes that help us.
Okay, we'd like to get you some funding for that. The last thing I have is that we have supposedly, or about to have, current new developments. You've mentioned the purple pipes that will have to be in these new developments. What about the impact to our entire system? I know we've just done park impact fees. Are there such a thing as water impact fees, so that we, the current residents, are not picking up the tab for these? Okay, so we're going to get new water fees for those?
You say that a little bit louder, please, so we don't have...
Yeah, I said, I believe that was included in the West Yo study and the impact fees that are going to be adopted.
The new development, if approved, will pay for the impacts of their development, the infrastructure needs.
Thank you very much.
Let's go to Councilwoman Schneider, and then Councilwoman Oliva, and have some time for Q and A from the public as well.
And I'll try to be really quick. First of all, thank you, thank you especially for the options. I appreciate having the options. I hope the public will appreciate having the options. The two charts, the chart on page 11 here, the single-family residential water bill, and the PDF or the map of where projects can go, can we get those as separate documents on our website as a single PDF, so that those of us who can't read the small can download it on our computers and upgrade it? I really appreciate that, I like this. What I'd also like to see on this map is those potential users who could use recycled water. So the golf course, the high school fields, the other fields, the parks, if, maybe that's a separate map, but at least put where we could use non-potable water at this point in time, so that the people of Milbrae can see where those potential uses are, and how many of them are, I guess would be, to me, a priority closer to El Camino Real, closer to the sewage treatment plant, since that's most likely our thing. And from Vice Mayor Papin's comments, do we have any existing swales? I know I've got one in my backyard, it's been quite a lake lately, but it is a swale. Do we have any actual designed swales in town? And if so, let's map them, so people will get an idea of what a swale is. A swale is a way to collect water. So, or you'll see in places with a lot of snow, they have these big dips right by the freeway, and they push the snow off, it melts, it gets into the groundwater. So swales are one way to keep the water, and then it gets treated by natural organisms in the soil. So it's a green building thing.
Can I add to that? Because when I was campaigning at one point, and I think Councilmember Lee was on the same street, one guy is actually, he gets such a big swale, as you put it, that he fills, he can fill his swimming pool. I mean, so we have some really active water supplies, and there's one street on the hill, I think I made a note somewhere, literally, the gutter, when it's not raining, and the water is coming down from up on the hill there. Yeah, the guy uses the water to wash his car, everything, so, I mean, we've got some water supplies.
The other advantage of swales is it captures water before it gets into the sewage, or the stormwater system. So hopefully, it reduces our SSOs, which are those overflows into the bay caused by stormwater getting mixed in with sewage. So the more swales we have, the reduced load it is on other piping systems. So I think we could be looking at swales all over the city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oliva?
Yeah, thank you, guys, for the report. It's amazing to look at all this again. I have two concerns with the continued current practice of...
It's on, she's just away from it.
As far as the options go, if we look at the current practice, and then you go back to slide, the slides on page five, it seems like since 1995, we're doing 1% of what we need to do a year. So the previous slide, which provides the map that, or the areas that need some particular need, how long is that going to take us if we continue the practice of which we're preaching at 1% a year? Go ahead.
I think at 1% of the year would be 100 years, because...
Okay, so 100 years, what it's going to do to us is we're going to actually take these particular needs, and they're going to cost five times the amount if we don't address them now, because it's going to be disastrous. So I'm going to, I'm going to say, looking at a proposal or option to continue our current practice is, would be irresponsible to even think about that. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Lee, and then we'll take questions from the public.
Thank you. That was a really good comment from all council members. I like this, this chart is a really good chart. Can you put a dollar amount added to that, like estimate range or something? Yeah, that'd be helpful for the next meeting or whatever.
We'll look at that. I'm not going to guarantee that we can do that, but we'll take a look at your request, yes.
Yeah, because it gives the public an idea of what we're facing. And again, thank the water crew for being out here. I know you guys have been working pretty hard, especially during the storms, and I saw you guys working pretty late, so thank you again for doing that.
Okay, let's take questions from the public, and maybe Jim, or if somebody can walk around with a microphone, so that everyone will, you know, all the comments will be recorded for those at home. Any comments or questions, please raise your hand, and Jim will come around. And also, please identify yourself when you speak. Thank you.
Lou Sandrini, resident. A couple of comments and then overview. You might mention the water rates do pay for some overhead finance and other departments. The water rates do pay for finance, attorneys, and other overhead. You might want to mention that, to be clear, and that's not an insignificant amount. You might want to explain why the O&M cost grew so much in that one period, and then why were rates kept flat for so many years, when we knew the cost of water was going up and the maintenance was going up? Now, I sent you a request for some information, I got a good answer. It's very conspicuous, in most cities, the Public Works Director is responsible for the water department. The only person not here is the Public Works Director. That's amazing. How is he going to do his job? He should be here to answer questions, but he's not even firsthand what's going on. Second comment, in the response I got from the city clerk answers the letter that I write concerning the water department. I don't think the city clerk has any responsibility for the water department. Who's managing the water department? The letter says, "It is possible that the..." Your letter, or Angela's. "It's possible that the council will ask staff, will ask staff for a comprehensive rate proposal, including financial information for future study session." We have been expecting they will ask for the next study session. Staff is waiting for council to ask? Council's job is policy. Staff's job is management. It's unbelievable that staff is waiting for council to ask them. Management, the city manager, should be telling you what needs to be done. Should have been raising rates over the last five years sequentially, so we don't have a big hit. Should have been managing the thing. It's backwards. The city is sick, it's backwards. That's why you're having these problems. That's why we're going to have such great rate increases. No reasonable, responsible management from the council or the city management.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the public?
Mr. Sandrini, I think you can see why the city, did you see the rate increase from the PUC here? I mean, we're trying to deal with just the system as a whole, so it's kind of a moving target when San Francisco keeps accelerating their rates 167%.
I think if you look at the graph, the years of management have changed.
Thank you. Along the lines of why the city didn't raise rates, I clearly recall, while I was on the council, and Mr. Ron Pope was our Public Works Director at the time, that we did, when the SFPUC announced they were going to raise the rates, we had set out over maybe a five-year period that the rates would increase at particular times. And I recall something about at that time, the SFPUC was going to raise 35%. So in our city council, we took action that in order to not be hit so heavily at one time, that we would do incremental rate increases, and our works people here know that we did that, and they're agreeing. So we did take that action. So it's not like we've sat here for lumps, you know, for all these years. We did take action. So sadly, as it was pointed out, this 175 or 76% increase from the CUP is a big whopper, and in reality, can Milbrae really raise the rate that much on our type of community of 23,000 customers? I just want to make sure to make clear that we did do incremental rates over a period of time. Thank you.
Any other, oh, yes.
Name is Manfred Wong, civil engineer by profession. Looking at a chart of the comparison of the water rates, I'm just curious to know, the proposed rates for Milbrae looks like will be near the upper third of the range, based on the comparison with the other cities. And I was just curious, the comparison... ...numbers for the other cities, are they the current rates for the other cities? Are they going to be the proposed rates for the other cities? Because I'm sure that if we're facing this dilemma of the rate increases and the needs for capital improvement, that the other cities are also looking at the same thing? So I'm just curious to know, how are we comparing with the other cities? So I'm just curious to know, how are we comparing with the other cities? Are we comparing with their current rate or their future rate?
So let me start, Mr., is it Mr. Fong?
Yes.
Thank you, really good question. The chart that you have in here is the comparable agencies surrounding Millbrae as of 2015, which is the last information we had available. We can, if the council goes down the path of looking at increasing rates, looking at financial alternatives, bring back information that will tell us what our options are as a community at different rate formulas. We haven't done that yet. When we do that, we can also take some time and look at what existing rates from 2015 to the current date in those surrounding agencies are and what changes have been made. So the chart that you're looking at in the presentation is how we compared to other water systems in our vicinity as of 2015. Hopefully, that starts to go down. You asked a lot of questions, but I think that started down the path of answering it.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
We agree with the resident. We have asked the same question here. We are aware that several cities have been, are in the same position that we are and are currently in the process of raising rates. I think that's what you meant. And we have been discussing that as well. Which cities are raising their rates or have already passed that? These numbers are out of date, and as we move forward, we are going to request that information from the council, from the staff, so that we can properly evaluate where we are in the realm of things.
I would just quickly add, it was one of the things, your same question when it came to the sewer rates, what other cities had upgraded their sewage treatment plants, which other ones had responded to various environmental concerns. And it might be nice and help the public understand how we compare to other cities if we also include in the, the sewer rates where those other cities are in their adjusting to new realities. Does that make sense? So then we're apple, as close to apples and apples as we can get. I don't think we can ever be perfectly apples and apples, but we'll get there. Great questions.
Okay. We are just about out of time. We have a regularly scheduled meeting, scheduled for 7:00. The only question I would have is, when is the follow-up to this meeting?
I think at this point, we need staff, excuse me, we need councils' questions, concerns, and based on those questions and concerns, we can bring back a date and, and information as to costs. What is it that you, of the four alternatives? Do you want us to continue to explore all four? Do you want us to go down the path of developing options for rate increases? Tell you what would be paid for with what type of increase? Where is the council's thinking on next steps?
Vice Mayor Pappin?
I'd like to ask the council if we can get some sort of consensus that I think we all agree we need to do better in improving the system overall. So increasing the current rate of repairing, I, I think is important, but I need to, how's the rest of the council?
One of the suggestions the staff might make is to look at the 2% with a front-loaded catch-up, look at a 3%. What would those numbers look like? Yeah, numbers with a plan.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I think any of these options, I think with the exception of the first, are worth exploring for, for their information and for, for their council direction.
Okay.
Any final comments from the council and...
I think we...
You want us to look at privatizing the water system?
I'd be curious to see what the other private, you know, for public information, what the other private water companies charge. I'm not advocating for that proposal.
We can bring back some preliminary information on what a process would be and how the comparison works.
Councilman Lee?
Again, I'd like to thank the audience for coming to listen. One of my, one of the reasons why I voted against it last time was because I didn't think we had enough outreach. I'm glad that there are more people, but I'm asking you as the audience and people at home to come to express your opinions so we can help get more understanding of what, what, what the city's citizens feel and what they, what their opinions are, and we can educate at the same time. So a little bit more outreach if we can.
Okay, thank you. It is 7:00. We do have a regular meeting down at the council chambers, so please come and join us, and we will be letting you know when the next follow-up meeting to the, for the water system is. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.